Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, October 20th, 2025 Pittsburgh Public Schools Public Hearing. For those who may be unfamiliar with our public hearing process, I just wanted to take a minute to let you all know how it works. Tonight's meeting will be moderated by Ms. Mercedes Williams. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and there is only one speaker allowed for each registered person tonight. And you're not allowed to share your time with anyone else, even the little ones, which occasionally happens. Speakers will be called one at a time. We will start with the individuals who are here in person, followed by all of those speakers who will participate virtually. If you're in person, as you're speaking, the microphone will start to blink when your time is coming to an end. For our online participants, we will give you a signal to let you know when you have 30 seconds left in your testimony. And, let's see, what is the other important information we should note tonight? Any registered participants who missed their assigned time or when they're first called, we will round back to you at the end to see if you have come in so that you have an opportunity to speak. If you're not able to speak or did not want to speak, testimonies, both written and verbal, will be shared on the district website tomorrow as part of the public record for this meeting. Stakeholders can view the meeting, the public hearing, by clicking on the link at the top of the homepage, and this recording will also be shared tomorrow, as we do with every meeting. And I think that is all the important stuff, and so I will turn the meeting over to Ms. Williams to call our first testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Our first speaker is Shirley Anne Hill.
I have followed the public hearings regarding the unfair treatment of former Montessori teacher Ms. Stephanie Lapine by Principal Kelly Meyer. Throughout my 41-year career with PPS, I too was subjected to toxic principals like her. In December of 2023, Ms. Stephanie Lapine was removed from her classroom by Kelly Meyer. Ms. Stephanie Lapine was cleared in February of 2024, but was conveniently transferred to another school that does not have a Montessori program. Because she chose to completely ignore Kelly Meyer's toxic behavior, Ms. Stephanie Lapine will be starting her own Montessori school. To add to Kelly Meyer's toxicity, she informed her staff not to communicate with a parent regarding their child, but to communicate with another family member. Keep in mind, this parent has always been the contact person. The new change was not communicated to the parent, nor was there a reason given. This is an insult to the education profession. Dr. Sacco, since this is your school, have you talked to Kelly Meyer regarding her toxic leadership that has been going on for years? I am appalled at that the Student Achievement Center is on the chopping block. This school offers our kids so much that credit recovery can't come close to it. When is the last time any of you observed a credit recovery class? While at Carrick, I can say credit recovery was dismal. It was a joke. The students log on, and they are basically on their own. This also goes on at other schools. Take off the blinders and keep SAC open. Carrick High School has a very small percentage of Black teachers. I quote, "Research has shown that Black teachers have a direct positive impact on Black students, Black and non-Black students." This is from "The Power of Black Teachers," by K.C. Wright, February 26, 2025. Black Students at Carrick Matter. What is the rationale behind virtual public hearing speakers going after in-person speakers? Please return to the original format where it did not make a difference which option you selected to speak at the public hearing. I'm done.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is April Closura.
Good evening. Before talking about transportation, I just have to say the people are not wrong who have been standing up here again and again, saying that when we eventually close some more schools, more charters will step in and cancel out any savings that we would realize. For example, I haven't heard of the Wildflower Foundation, but probably some of you educators have. There's a local launch team getting started on the path for approval of some number of neighborhood-embedded micro-Montessori pre-K to eight schools. So to put a fine point on it, when we at PPS are having to close our smallest schools, because we are told they are unsustainably small, I might have to pay my tax dollars to support these micro-charters of no more than 80 students. So my tax dollars could just be going from a closed, small school to open a new, even smaller, school. We might have to support a school of 80 because the state will let you do that if you're approved for a charter. I have to take my tax money away from one group of parents that likes their school and give it to another? When we end up with a variety of charter schools of uneven quality around the district, we have the opposite of economy of scale, and we are no closer to achieving equity for the students. I'm not against change, but I am against doing something that seems counterproductive. While charters get support from various foundations and Wall Street, PPS seems to be losing corporate support, like through the discontinued Pittsburgh Promise. Now that they are not funding the scholarships for post-secondary, they should be helping in some other way. As a bus driver, my mind immediately goes to transportation. We have students who go on very long distances taking school transportation. I drive kids up to an hour and 20 minutes, sometimes an hour and 30 minutes. School transportation is a weakness in our system. It provides opportunities for students to be very minimally supervised relative to other settings and find themselves making bad choices, trouble that can lead to bus suspensions and that sometimes lead to missed attendance at school. Just as bad, we are missing opportunities to intervene on the bus in various types of situations that involve the mental health and emotional health of our students, who are acting out, fighting, or just expressing that they're having a bad day. What if there were a trained person, such as a childcare worker counselor or social worker, even if that was a student or trainee doing an internship or credit hours? I've talked with some friends who've been through the school of social work, and they find this idea feasible. The summer months with our summer school students would be a good pilot. We just need someone to work with the district and fund this type of thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Vanessa Dagavarian.
I'm here to speak to the community, especially those whose school is going to be voted on regarding closures over Thanksgiving. I would like to note that none of the board members who voted to start the process have any children in PPS. The neighborhood magnets work. It is a huge mistake to close the elementary magnets. They are closing the inequality gaps in our school system. Based on a 2024 A-plus school report, Black and low-income students at Woolslayer are performing better than their counterparts at the following schools, and this is not a complete list: PPS Montessori, PPS Coal Flax, Catalyst Academy, Urban Academy of Greater Pittsburgh, Urban Pathways, Propel Hazelwood, Propel Northside, and the Environmental Charter School. This is not putting down any of these schools, but simply showing that the neighborhood magnet model is working. In building on success year after year, we have a focused principal, a dedicated staff, and an involved community. Closing elementary school magnets like Woolslayer, Fulton, Miller, I don't know if these are all magnets, but Manchester Arsenal is not going to save the district money, and it will cause immense damage to our communities.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nina Louise Dagavarian.
Hello, my name is Nina Louise. I am in third grade at Woolslayer. I was unable to go to the hearing for my school this summer. I was visiting my dad. I do not understand why you're closing schools that are so amazing like mine. I'm doing really well at my school, so much better than at the school I went to before. I miss my friends, I will miss my friends and my teachers. Also, the lunch ladies, the helpers, and our principal. It drives me crazy to see people speaking about their schools and having many board members not looking at them. This is disrespectful.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Anne Ferris.
Hi, I'm Anne Ferris, a PPS parent living in the North Side. Due to the current spending freeze, I'm confused by Agenda Item 10.14 for the authorization of $115,000 for a WPXI contract for hyper-local content related to DEI issues the citizens of Pittsburgh are facing in their everyday lives, plus 10 long-form segments with Dr. Walters. This expense is not a contractual agreement essential to the continuity of classroom instruction. We had in-school PSAT testing for eighth and ninth graders this week canceled with only a week's notice, not enough time for parents to register their students at an alternate testing location. We have an eighth-grade science class at Starett unable to purchase the live fish to study for an already set-up aquarium. If I am misunderstanding the phrase "essential to the continuity of classroom instruction," I am happy to read a follow-up Peach Star communication. I would like to see or hear the superintendent present analytics from previous rounds of long-form content like the "In the Know: Students First with Superintendent Walters" series. In my searching, I see that one of those received 13 views on the PPS YouTube channel, which has 525 subscribers. Please tell me who this content is for. It is well-known the average viewer will not get past the first 30 seconds, and a 2015 Microsoft study showed an 8.25-second attention span with Gen Z viewers. In addition to the question of why our Student Outcomes Focus Board of Directors is spending any seconds authorizing this expense during a spending freeze, is why this specific contract should even be considered at all. There are still a significant number of families unaware of how the Future Ready Facilities Plan will impact them. Board of Directors, I hope you expect Dr. Walters' Implementation Plan presentation on October 30th to include a detailed timeline on any changes that will impact student school assignments and IEP services they receive, as well as in-person communication plan for all families. Jean Walker has said it is not the board's responsibility to determine the how, but it is very much under your authority to determine the when. This is a critical moment for PPS and the defining moment of how the nine of you choose to demonstrate your authority. The October 30th presentation allows the community one public testimony the day before you plan to vote to move forward with this plan. When everything is on fire, everything is priority. The community expects you to protect them from harm the best you can. The attitude of "we all have to endure difficult situations" shouldn't apply here. We should see you all working with us to increase support and minimize harm. What you'd each decide next month will show us not what you were able to do to get things done, but what you were willing to do, knowing the consequences. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Emily Sawyer.
Good evening. This week is the Dignity in Schools Campaign Week of Action Against School Pushout. Their website states, "In their best light, schools are meant to be places of hope, belonging, community, and possibility. Through education, students and communities are supposed to gain critical skills and socialization to participate meaningfully in the positive transformation of society." Yet today, millions of students in the United States and in PPS are criminalized through policing in schools, harsh disciplinary codes, and test-driven systems that treat young people as problems to be managed rather than as human beings to be nurtured. "We must insist that education is more than buildings and policies. It's both a relationship and commitment rooted in human connection and trust. Our school communities must reflect that through fostering belonging, healing, and justice for every student." That's the end of the stuff from their website. "It is more important than ever to invest in restorative responses and support for students, staff, families, and communities. We must abandon long-failing strategies of punitivity, dehumanization, and criminalization, such as suspension, surveillance, and policing. Numerous studies, plus any time spent in a school, indicate that more rules and strictness create more disruptive behavior, and that severe and punitive punishment actually have the unintended consequence of generating defiance." We need investment. We don't really invest in the things that we want to put in place, in place of suspensions. It's not about stopping giving out suspensions. It's about creating schools where students don't need to be suspended. We can do that. We can meet needs. We can solve problems. We can remember that children are children and not punish them for being loud or disruptive. Those are normal behaviors. The amount of times I hear adults yell at children for things that are normal behaviors is, there is no limit. It's horrifying, actually. And I'm not going to cry, but extrinsic motivators also, PBIS is a horrible system. They lose their effectiveness over time, and they actually decrease intrinsic motivation. We can see this. We've been doing it. It doesn't work. We can do something else. I promise you, we can. We keep the old apparatus of punishment, surveillance, and policing, and we paste on a few bits of restorative jargon or activities. Or worse, we name the old punishments restorative and ruin the concept for kids who know that it's still lunch detention, even if you call it restorative lunch. And as one of my eighth graders loves to remind me anytime there's a consequence at his school, that collective punishments are a war crime. I'm not talking about pilots or programs. I'm talking about the school district investing commitments and change across the district in every school and office. I don't mean shoehorning in a few restorative activities here and there in a still punitive and dehumanizing system. I mean fundamentally changing ourselves and how we interact with one another in order to change our school system, our communities, and the world.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Sarah Zengel.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm going to go really fast, so apologies in advance. So I started investigating numbers and looking at what this cycle of decline looks like in spreadsheets, and I went back 25 years. So 2001, we closed two buildings. We've lost 9.5% of our student body. 2003, 2004, 10 buildings, we lost 6.2%. 2006, 16 buildings, we lost 14.8% of our student population. '08, '09, three buildings, another 6.8. 2010, 2012, closed eight buildings, lost 6.2%. And between 2020 and 2022, we obviously know that it was COVID, closed consolidated one building, lost 14.1%. So we've got this cycle of decline. We can see it in the numbers. So let's go through a second set of numbers. 2004, PPS paid $16 million for charter schools, which is 3.7% of the total budget. Sorry, 2004. 2009, PPS paid $35.8 million, which was 6.8% of the total budget. 2014, $55 million, 10.4% of the total budget. And 2025, $166.9 million, which was 22% of the budget, not including any transportation costs. I'm not against charter schools. I know it sounds like it, but fundamentally, I am not. If they were held to the same standards, the same scrutiny played by the same financial rules, I would not have any issues, but they don't. The majority of charter schools in the city have worse outcomes when compared to PPS, especially for our most vulnerable and most marginalized populations, despite these different rules and despite more money. Okay? You are proposing the closure of 12 schools and the reconfiguration of nearly the entire district at the elementary and middle school levels. If historical numbers have taught us anything, it is to expect a pretty large enrollment decline, probably to the tune of 10 to 12%. So for right now, that means 1,700 to 2,100 students. If they depart for charter schools, you can expect to pay a third of our budget for 28% of our students to get subpar education. As I was reading through these budgets, really interesting things started to happen around 2008. The financial reports opened by started suggesting that we address enrollment decline. Then in 2014, they start citing strategic goals, timelines for equity, attracting back students, closing achievement gaps. Does any of this sound familiar? Director Talafaro put forth a goal for this Future Ready Plan that the community should have an active role and be engaged in the formation of this plan. So thank you for that, Director. I know you're at home right now. But there were questions from our administration about how do we do that? I have a suggestion. Come to our holiday concert at Woolslayer. Take the first 15 or last 15 minutes and address the parents. Everyone shows up to see their kids sing and wear their cute holiday stuff, so talk to us there. Tell these parents your plan, get their feedback in real time, engage us. Ours is December 16th. You're welcome. As a district, where we go and how we get there is up to you all, but how many of us are still around when you do get there is up to us. We have to do this together for public school to be successful in Pittsburgh.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Lauren Stuparitz.
Good evening, PPS Board and Administration. My name is Kim Delhousen. I'm an ELD teacher at Bresheer High School. A group of ELD teachers and OST community partners emailed a request to use half-day professional learning for increased collaboration among secondary ELD teachers to better meet the needs of our English learners. After an initial response from the director of ELD and one of the principals, we responded, answering questions, and further making our case. The following email response was sent, 9/22, to the ELD director, three-building principals, and copied to the chief academic officer and two board members. To date, we have not received a response. Thank you for your prompt response to our proposal. We are excited to move toward our vision of a district-wide community of ELD teachers who are committed to ensuring English learners receive the same high-quality instruction as all other students. We appreciate Principal Maholsky's suggestion to incorporate ELD professional development within alder days. While we agree that school-based PD is valuable, our proposal highlights the urgent need for collaboration across the district. English learners and the ELD teachers who serve them are not distributed evenly across schools. To address this inequity, professional learning must be designed to include both itinerant and school-based teachers. Otherwise, we reinforce the very isolation that hinders student outcomes and teacher well-being in under-resourced schools. This aligns directly with the ELD department's mission statement. Point one, provide guidance, policy, and procedures for effective instruction of English learners in both ELD and mainstream classrooms to maximize academic and linguistic outcomes. Point two, build capacity for school-level teams in their work with English learners and families. Point three, deliver meaningful, relevant professional learning and instructional support to teachers, principals, and other district personnel. By building a collective foundation of support, we strengthen the district's pursuit of equity for all students. Meaningful, relevant professional learning around Ls cannot occur if knowledge practices and teachers remain siloed. While each school has unique needs, students frequently move between schools in the district, and they deserve a consistent, high-quality education wherever they are enrolled. We are confident that by working as a district-wide collective of ELD teachers with your direct support, we can ensure English learners receive the education and resources they are legally entitled to, and that all teachers are equipped to serve them well. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Meg Booth.
Good evening. My name's Meg Booth, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of ARISE, the Alliance for Refugee Youth Support and Education, an OST partner of PPS. At ARISE, I've led enrichment programs for high school students who were forcibly displaced to the U.S. within the past five years, most of whom are English language learners. Students and families often turn to us for support navigating schools, understanding documents, enrolling in programs like Summer Boost, raising concerns, or accessing vital information to make decisions. Too often, we're asked to be bridging communication breakdowns between schools and families. One urgent issue we see in students is aging out of high school. Many arrive without access to former transcripts or with interrupted education, and PPS places them in ninth grade regardless of age. This can lead to them turning 21 before graduating, sometimes without realizing it until it's too late. I've sat in meetings where school staff feel unequipped to help, and there's no consistent district guidance for identifying these students proactively, preventing this from happening, or connecting students to other options after they're ineligible to remain in school. As a community organization, we recognize that we have a privilege, oftentimes more flexibility, to support students than school staff. And we also know that the best outcomes emerge when we meaningfully partner with schools, counselors, teachers, and principals. But the issues we're asked to support are created by inequitable district infrastructures, policies, and practices. It's the district's leadership's responsibility to build systems that support students who are consistently pushed to the margins for intersectional identities, youth who are English language learners, forcibly displaced, Black and Brown, and underserved, and under-resourced. Without clear structures and guidance, exclusion and mistrust of the district grows. As a PPS alum, it's disheartening to see the ongoing disorganization in how these students are served. When the district fails to respond to sincere efforts of its own educators to improve conditions of ELLs, the only growing population of students, all youth, pay the price. In the context of the Future Ready Plan, educators and community groups are asking for transparency, accountability, and true collaboration. ELD teachers have proposed concrete solutions to address inequity, like district-wide PDs for ELD educators, and they deserve a response and action from district leadership. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Deepa Bardaloy.
Hi. I teach a content English, English language development, and a reading intervention class to ELD students at Bresheer High School. It's clear many of my ninth-grade students need reading intervention despite having been in our school system for at least three or four years. These students find it challenging to understand content knowledge in mainstream biology, chemistry, history, and civics classes. I want to strongly request that the PPS board members and other decision-makers at PPS include the voices of all ELD teachers, including mine. So far, emails sent by us to leadership at the school department and board level have yielded very little response and an exchange of ideas. We have recommendations that can improve these issues, but we need engagement from our superiors. Our end goal is to enrich the educational experiences of ELD students at all PPS schools, not just mine, and eliminate learning gaps. Please reconsider listening to us on how best we can support each other in different schools at PPS, so all ELD students have a learning experience that is equitable and consistent. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Lily Allman.
Why are you waiting until after we speak to reveal your plan? Why haven't you opened the magnet program for the schools that aren't on the list to be closed? Questions like these have gone unanswered when we need those answers. We've asked the same questions over and over, but we go unheard. When will you finally respond? When will we get the answers we need? Yet more questions you are ignoring. When will we finally get the answers?
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Valerie Webb Allman.
Okay, first, I just want to take a moment to echo Anne earlier. The promo video, spending more money on that at this moment, is probably not wise. I would encourage you to spend that money to sponsor educational opportunities and trainings for at-risk families, to protect our students all the way home and all the way in their home. We have a student that was detained by ICE, and there's a lot of families that are concerned that, I mean, yes, we're a sanctuary school district. We are protecting our kids when they're at school, but these are children that, when they're off the bus, sometimes they are not prepared. It may be a good opportunity for the district to reach out to these families, to offer them more information that can help to protect them and to protect every child in our district. Second concern is the lack of timeline transparency and the obvious disregard of space for community feedback in the latest FU plan iteration. The superintendent scheduled this presentation for next week, so there's no community engagement opportunities on the calendar that were added to give the public the opportunity to share feedback outside of the November public hearing. This means that the public will only have three minutes the day before you're scheduled to vote on it, and it's also the week of Thanksgiving. To be clear, this is a huge mistake, as the only reason you all have been made aware of issues with the previous iterations of the FU plan has been through public engagement that has happened over months. Even if you table the vote until December, you will still need to make decisions before the public hearing and the next vote, because you have to pass a budget. So even if you hold off on the budget, it's only three weeks that you're giving people elementary school magnets, are kind of in limbo because we don't know what's going on with this plan, there are schools that will continue to offer Magnet programs, especially at the high school and middle school level, like Kappa and Alder Dice and all these other schools. We have rising students that are going to be going into high school and middle school that are not able to apply for these programs because nothing has been done yet, and we don't know what the timeline is. You need to actually pencil something down to the public so that we can make plans for our students. And if students want to change programs, even if they're not rising into sixth or ninth grade, they can't do anything either. We got a student that is being bullied relentlessly at Schiller, and while we are doing everything we can to support her, she would rather just move to another program.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, recall in speaker number eight, Lauren Stuparitz.
I have two young kids, and I'm also a parent leader on the Local Task Force for the Right to Education, which is a parent and professional group for issues with special education in the district and in the Pittsburgh Mount Oliver Intermediate Unit. So with the closures and consolidations and changing of programs that are going to happen, this is a cause of concern, especially for parents of kids who have special needs and need support through 504 plans and IEPs to access their education in an inclusive way. I have been doing as much learning as I can about how the school system works and also how special education parent advocacy works, like how we can ensure our kids' rights and making sure they get to access their education and with a sense of belonging with their peers. So there is a framework for access and belonging that comes from the Bureau of Special Ed, from the state, from PATAN, the Training and Technical Assistance. And I learned that every time a student moves to a new program or school, they really should be having this, they call it a toolkit, but I have a copy here. It's the Framework for Access and Belonging, and it's basically supplementary aids and services and supports. So it's a part of your plan, your IEP plan, and it's a team effort. So the family, the support teachers, the school staff, principal, or the program officer of students with exceptionalities should all be working to make sure each student, when they move to a new place or a new program, is able to get what they deserve and that their education is still supporting them and that they're not falling through the cracks. So with a district-wide shakeup of programs and facilities and buildings, be prepared. Each student should be having one of these, and their parent has the right to call for one of these. So I would suggest getting some consultation and support for the staff, because parents are going to be asking for getting their kids what they need. And so on that, I really invite members of the board to attend a local task force meeting, parents and professionals. We are running these meetings and trying to help creatively problem-solve and make sure that the district, the intermediate unit, and the students are working together and that we're getting these kids what they need.
Thank you for your testimony. This concludes the testimony portion of the public hearing. I will now turn the meeting back over to President Jean Walker.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And again, thank you to everyone who participated, especially those who waited for us to fix some of our technical difficulties. We have a busy couple of weeks ahead of us, and so Wednesday is our upcoming legislative meeting, next Thursday, the 30th. The superintendent will be presenting the implementation plan, and then we have a bunch of stuff happening in November. So we look forward to seeing you all on Wednesday and then again next week. But at that, this meeting is adjourned. Please be safe getting home if you are out driving, and we will see you soon.